PAC TV, welcome. Welcome to the Wednesday, April 10th Select Board Meeting for the Town of Pembroke. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
We've switched it again. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. We have a special guest this evening. State Representative Kathleen Lenatra is here to greet us.
I'm here to greet you.
How are you?
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me. Yes, so I am here to see what you need for assistance. I've gone through, I have some of your numbers. Is this on? It is on, I already read them. Some of your numbers for Chapter 70, Chapter 90, I brought those with me. I brought, we've already talked to the town manager about the $200,000 for that you have coming to you for the community center, and then there's additional $200,000 coming to you for the Pembroke Downtown Revitalization.
We're using both.
So you can use them both. So that's, I'm coming here with money. How's that? $400,000.
I like that.
How's that? Starting off with that. We did, the budget did come out today. I don't know if you're aware of that. So what is going to benefit Pembroke schools, especially where your enrollment's down, is per pupil is now raised $75, so it's $104 per pupil in the House. We're hoping the Senate concurs, but that is huge for Pembroke because your rate is going down. So your formula doesn't really work for you when your enrollment rate's down. So I have that good news. What do you have for me? What is it that you have in mind?
I'd like to start with the town manager because he's direct day-to-day on this.
Sure. Okay.
I've got some questions.
Okay, well, let's see what we have the answers.
So what is the Chapter 90 number? Do you have that?
I believe I do. Let me look. No, I have Chapter 70. Wait, 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 wait. Nope, nope, nope.
We'll get it.
Bill, did we bake, or did the school committee bake in thinking $30 per pupil?
Mm-hmm.
Was that the one that they, and it went to 70?
No.
I know it was a conservative number.
We were very conservative. Yeah, so that's gonna be a plus.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it is only, so.
It's still, it's only in the House.
We have the governor's budget, the House's budget. Now it's time for the Senate.
Right.
Then you go to conference committee.
Correct, correct.
In September, November, you'll finally have a budget if it's anything like last year.
Well, it's not gonna be long.
I'm teasing.
All right.
You never know.
$30 is the minimum.
So my first question is exactly that. How do you think that the revenue projections at the Commonwealth of not hitting those targets, because for the first seven months, we haven't hit, in fact, they revised the targets, and still didn't hit the revised target? How do you think that's gonna?
Well, March was better.
It was better.
Yeah, yeah. And we don't have April yet, so, you know.
How do you think that's gonna affect local aid, number one?
Mm-hmm.
You know, after you get it through the Senate Conference and then back to the governor?
Mm-hmm.
And number two, do you think it's gonna affect other earmarks that we would likely be getting or hope to get?
In the future?
Yeah.
So fortunately, we're gonna have $8.9 billion in our rainy day fund. So this budget is, as we're saying revenues are down, isn't as bad as we think. We've increased a lot of things that we need, like Chapter 90 funds. We all know that our streets and our bridges are really bad, right? So we've increased that a lot, unfortunately, it's going to the T's. So we had the fair share amendment. So we have a billion more going to the schools, right? And then 1.3, so it was split, I'm sorry. 53% went to transportation and the rest is going to the schools. So it was 1.3 billion split that way. So transportation will get 53%, and then, what's that, 47% will go to the schools to education. So, I mean, it wasn't, honestly, I mean, I had no idea what to expect. I had the breakfast meeting this morning, and I was pretty happy, pretty happy. But I don't have a crystal ball, you know, like none of us do. I can be cautiously optimistic, like the rest of us.
So how do you see now that the House budget is out, moving forward, doing amendments, et cetera?
Yeah.
How do you see that? Is that process gonna move relatively quickly this year?
Amendments always work the budget week. We always do some budget week.
Right, I understand. But I mean, so that's the first step.
Okay.
Then it goes to the Senate, they do their budget, then their amendments, then they do the conference.
Correct.
Get it back to the governor.
Yeah.
Are we gonna know our local aid numbers hopefully by August, do you think?
I mean, that's the goal. The goal is, it's an election year, so I bet you will.
I know, I know. You know, I love election years, because when you ask for something, it usually comes through.
You get it.
So, okay, those are the first two pieces.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I wanted to recognize Chris. Chris has been stepping up awesome.
Great.
You know, we're pleased by that, especially since we're lacking one rep, so.
I know that you're lacking one rep, but when I, even though I have one precinct, which is about 2,000 people, I've always been involved in Pembroke.
I'm not saying you're not.
So, you know, I'm at the senior center, I'm helping constituents from the whole town of Pembroke, I'm watching your home rules, so you have not been without representation. So I just wanna let you know that.
And that's part of why I wanna compliment you and your staff, because it's really important that we have that representation.
It is important, right.
You're new to me.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm used to picking up the phone and calling Cole. If you don't know who Cole is.
True, but we've met several times.
Yeah, we have.
So I can't say that I'm that new to you.
No, that's true. So, and I appreciate it.
So it's a change, you know? No one likes change, but now you have a change, and they pick up and they call me.
Absolutely. So, thank you for following up on the community center stuff.
Mm-hmm.
We felt that that was a little bit stagnant.
Mm-hmm.
So we appreciate that, that work. And then, we're gonna be reaching out to you again. We gave Senator Moran some things that we wanna make sure you're on board with supporting when it comes down from the Senate, so.
Okay, so if you wanna email that over to me, that's great.
I will.
Yeah. And you always have, you know, Senator Moran represents all of Pembroke as well, so you've always had her as well.
Yeah, she's been great too.
Okay.
You know, we have, I've had no issues, you know, it's been awesome. Our legislative delegation has been very supportive, at least from when I call with a question or something that's going on.
Great, that's good to hear.
The final question that I had was more related to, we're gonna have some things coming out of town meeting that we want your support on.
Okay.
And I'm sure these folks will allude to that.
Sure.
You know, we have a couple of local action liquor licenses that we wanna make sure, as soon as town meeting votes those, then as soon as they're certified.
And you know the process for that?
Yeah.
So it would just go to me instead of to Josh's office?
Yeah, so we'll make sure you get those.
Mm-hmm.
And just, I just wanna highlight them for you tonight, so you know they're on your way.
Sure, and can you just follow up on those with an email?
Sure, yeah.
Chris did mention to them, to me before.
Absolutely, yeah, so.
Okay, great.
All right.
All right, great, thank you. Kathy, one thing I just wanna follow up on further what Bill said about our home rule petitions.
Correct.
Should they, should they pass town meeting? We had a home rule petition sent to Beacon Hill to get our Town Managers Act in.
Mm-hmm.
And holy cow, they dragged their feet, dragged their feet, dragged their feet, and we literally had everyone that had any relationship with Governor Charlie Baker to sign it three days before they went on Christmas break, and it would, if the legislative session would've been over, it would've been dead in the water. So, once Billy emails you with these, if you could just, you know.
So did that wanna go through?
Get some, get some help, get some help up there.
Sure.
You know, grab all the friends that you have up there to get it through.
Terrifella is a personal friend, so that will be helpful to you.
Excellent.
And she deals with that, so that will be, I had lunch with her today, so that will be very helpful.
Terrific, terrific. I'll open up for the board. Does anyone have any questions? Representative Lenatra?
I know Selectman Flynn, you emailed Senator Moran today thinking she was coming.
Well, it was, yes, I did.
Right.
I thought it was, it's a Senate bill anyways that I.
It is a Senate bill, yes.
So it hasn't gotten to you yet?
Yes, no, it hasn't gone to us.
So I'm gonna wait till it gets to you.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't get it, I just got it when I was leaving Boston, and I didn't even look at it.
Right, I'm not looking to sandbag anyone, you know.
No, that's fine, happy to discuss it.
Hopefully it doesn't get to you, 'cause I'm not a fan of this bill, but if it does, we'll.
If it has it, it's not.
Good.
Okay, I'll just share that with you and all our viewers.
It's mandate for sex education.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, I didn't get a chance to look at it, though.
It's okay.
Unfortunately.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in today, too.
Of course, happy to.
Did you have anything else, Rich?
No.
Is anyone else?
No questions, just thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Oh, my pleasure, my pleasure. Happy to come again, just.
Did you have a message for anyone in the crowd before you left?
I do. Can we congratulate Gretchen Emmett? Is that who my message is?
Absolutely.
All right. But I do, so Gretchen, again, is a personal friend, worked in Kingston for many years at the senior center, and you guys stole her from us. But then I was happy to represent Pembroke, 'cause then I could hang out with her again. And you've done a fabulous job for everything, for both towns, and I wish you well, and I will miss you, you know that. And my chiefs, two of my favorite chiefs, I'll just have to say.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve. Thank you so much for coming.
Oh, my pleasure, my pleasure.
We look forward to working with you more and more, so.
And we're going to really push that 104, like, really advocate for that per pupil, because it's gonna help a lot of my towns.
104 or 75?
No, went up 75 to 104.
Went up 75 to 104.
See? Isn't that even better? Look at that! Give me an extra star on that, Stevie.
I like it.
We want the full 104, but we will take a compromise at 95.
No! Absolutely not, we will not.
Never let him negotiate.
No one heard that, no one heard that.
It's not gonna be 104.
Stricken from the record.
All right, thank you.
Take a compromise on our budget.
No, no. Well, good luck to everybody that's going over their budget, and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all.
Appreciate you coming. Next down on the agenda, we have board action items. The renewal of the ice cream vending permit for Stephen Burt, Burt's Ice Cream, April 2024 to April 2025. What is the pleasure of the board?
No, he's not, he's been a long-standing man.
Go ahead, Steve.
I would move to grant the application of Stephen Burt of Burt's Ice Cream to renew his permit, number IC-01, to engage in ice cream truck vending and operate an ice cream truck throughout the town, Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to dusk, and on Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to dusk, subject to Health Department inspection and police chief's approval.
Motion made, second. Is there any discussion? Standing on, all is in favor?
Aye.
Vote Routine and Other Known Article Recommendations, Articles 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11. Bill, did you wanna walk the board through these?
Sure. So, Article 6 is the annual trust fund transfers. This is part of our financial management policy. It helps to keep our bond rating, or help to improve it, as long as we continue to maintain our financial management policies. These are the OPEB Trust Fund, the Separation Pay Benefits Fund, the Capital Stabilization Fund, the Stabilization Fund, Special Injury Leave Fund, and Workers' Compensation Insurance Fund. We are self-insured for both 111F and workers' comp. 111F is simply workers' comp for public safety folks, police and fire. So, I am strongly recommending that the board vote favorable action on this article.
Very good. Bill, just for the board and the public's information, when does the advisory board take their recommendation votes?
They typically take them the night after you do. They will likely be taking these up next Thursday, because they're budget-heavy tomorrow, so.
Very good. So you've heard the town manager's recommendation. Is there any discussion? Is there any action to be taken?
I would rule that we recommend favorable action on Article 6.
Second.
Do you wanna take them as a slate?
I'm gonna wind it up. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Tracy, do you wanna amend your motion?
Take 6, 7, and 8 as a slate, or 6?
Yeah, I do.
So it was, it was brought, so.
Oh, I see.
I'm asking, if, it's brought to us as 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11. And you don't have to, it's the pleasure of the board.
So, quick question about 10 and 11. Do we need addresses to submit this to the state for a home rule petition?
Council, council has reviewed these and said they're okay. I would recommend that in the motion at town meeting, not the article, but the motion at town meeting, we include an address.
Okay. So, Tracy, the motion is yours, so you can take it any way you like.
So we want you to vote a slate for 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11.
Second.
With no dispute.
Okay.
All right, so, motion made, second. Is there any discussion on it? Standing on, all is in favor?
Aye.
Acknowledged removal of old Article 12 and renumbering of remaining articles. Bill, just briefly for everybody.
So, so when council reviewed Article 12, they said that it would not pass muster at the Attorney General's office, and that the Attorney General had already refused to certify five different towns' votes on a very similar article. So she recommended that we remove the article from the warrant. Tonight, we, you have to actually do that, because it's not gonna pass anyway, so.
And for those who have already previously seen the draft articles, what is the article?
It is the Sex Offender Bylaw.
Okay. So, having heard the town manager's recommendation and an explanation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to remove Article 12.
Second.
And renumbering of remaining articles, is that part of your motion? It should be.
Yes.
Thank you. And that's your second as well?
My second, yes.
I have motion made, second. Are all is in favor?
Aye.
Vote Routine and Other Known Article Recommendations, the new, number 12 through 14, 16, 18 through 20. Bill, just walk us through this briefly before we discuss.
Sure. So Article 12 is the, from the Bylaw Review Committee to change the hours of the local polling. We were previously from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on the Saturday following the second Tuesday of the month. We are, per the town clerk's information and the fine work of the Bylaw Review Committee, we are now recommending that that get changed from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on the Saturday following the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
The next article is extend the dog license period. We currently close our dog license period very, very quickly. The plan is to now extend that from January 1st, I believe, through April 1st. Let me just make sure that that is correct, yes.
And the reason was, they wanted to get more dogs registered. It wasn't about the fees or the late fees, they just wanted to, it's mostly about registration more than any else.
Correct. Yeah. So, also recommending that we do that. The next one is, let me make sure I'm not missing one here. Next one is the Fire Department Bylaw. We're going to be including Code of Massachusetts Regulations 529, Sections 1 through 50, and then put some teeth into our bylaws for fire inspections, et cetera. So I'm strongly recommending this one also, and if you have specific questions, the chief is here. I don't, it's pretty clear and self-explanatory, but it's up to you guys.
It's mostly to get us in line with the state law. There's been some changes.
And Article 16 is also kind of a change to put us in line, that the state recommends the membership that we are proposing. We currently have nine members on our Community Preservation Committee. We are proposing to eliminate two, which is the DPW Commissioner, which technically no longer exists as a DPW Commissioner anymore, and the member from the Open Space Committee. This was also supported at their meeting. The Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to support this, and I am also asking the board to vote favorable action on this one. So, Article 18 is Community Preservation Funded Proposals. I'm gonna take a little bit of time and go through these, 'cause there is some detail there. Recommendation A is a recommendation for myself and the Recreation Director, who is here somewhere. Lance, raise your hand, right there. For $162,000 for a recreation, outdoor fitness court behind the recreation center. It's gonna go where the current playground is. The current playground is, was condemned and actually was removed this week. So, it's gonna go there. One thing we're taking advantage of, and I wanna thank Blue Cross Blue Shield and, what's the other organization?
National Fitness Campaign.
National Fitness Campaign, because we are getting grant funds that are helping us to support this process. So, we need these funds, but they're also gonna kick in, and they're gonna help us with the construction piece and all of the planning piece, and then the equipment will come from them. So, super excited about that, so that's Recommendation A. I'm supporting that. Obviously, the Recreation Commission and the CPC Committee all voted favorably for that. The next one is $49,000 to do paving at the Bryantville Meeting House, which will pave that whole area down there, and improve that mud bed that's there, and allow us to do proper parking around the current food pantry and the Bryantville Meeting House. Long time overdue there. Recommendation C is for $13,000 to, if you've driven by the Bethel Chapel, it's a town-owned building. There goes the pen again. We're starting to see some failure there. So we, so we want to, great day with that pen. So we wanna keep that building up to snuff. It's a town-owned building, it's $13,000 for exterior painting and repairs. I'm strongly recommending that one. And then, final one, I have a couple of comments related to this based on town council review. There's a recommendation for $25,000 for the First Church. And council's comments were that this is allowed only, and we wanna make it very clear, only because the First Church has significant historical significance to the town, and the town's clock is actually on the church. So we are recommending that we spend the $25,000 to fix the roof at the First Church. Those are all of the CPC funds that were approved by both myself, recommended by me, and approved by the Community Preservation Commission, and I'm recommending this evening that the board take those actions. The last two are routine articles that technically aren't required, but we have a tradition in Pembroke of doing them every year, and that is to accept the town report and to post the annual town election. The town clerk would always do that on behalf, but we have a tradition of having town meeting vote those. You and the town clerk actually have the authority to do it. So I'm recommending that we vote favorably on both of those articles also.
All right, very good. You have heard the town manager's explanation and recommendation. What is the pleasure of the board?
Just a little bit of discussion. So, just to verify, for the Article 18 CPC project proposals, those A, B, and C, those are all publicly owned. I was actually surprised Bethel Chapel is publicly owned, not privately owned.
It is owned by the town.
Okay. And then, obviously, First Church is privately owned.
Correct.
This is one of those things, obviously, we've talked about a few times. I've brought up a number of times about public funds, private, et cetera. Although, I mean, to the point of it being so, such a, so significantly embedded with the town, this is something that I personally, obviously not representing the board, but personally, I would make an exception over, just in terms of the way I view things, as public funds should be appropriated first for public use. So I mean, that is interesting, that is interesting to me. I'm gonna vote in favor of that. But I'm curious, just in terms of understanding the process a little bit better, too, what, if there are, can you explain the process a little bit better for CPC funding? Can we hold on to funds if there's nothing that comes up that we deem historically significant enough? For example, or is it a use it or lose it situation? I know that the state gives us 1% towards it, and we have to move the funds to the different accounts, but.
So it is not a use it or lose it situation.
Okay.
Well, rolling from fiscal year to fiscal year with funds in the town's accounts. If someone doesn't spend money that is appropriated to them, it is a use it or lose it situation. You know, if someone spends $20,000 from a $25,000 appropriation, we're not gonna just give them that money to use somewhere else. We're gonna, that's gonna go back into CPC, and the town will appropriate it for another use. Currently, I have put a policy in place that any CPC articles that are, that must be reviewed by me for the exact reason. I can't control that, they can still apply, but I want to be able to make a recommendation to the Community Preservation Committee, yes or no, on whether I think it's a good use of town funds. And so, we absolutely wanna prioritize town properties first, but there is, there is allowance under the statute to, for non-town properties to receive CPC funds. We just wanna make sure that it doesn't violate the state constitution, specifically the anti-aid amendment, which, which is why I stated for the church that it, it has historic significance to the town. You know, the Pembroke's halls is the biggest historic, but the clock on that thing, we also want to, and maintain, so.
And it being First Church is basically settled there.
Correct.
The town is settled there.
It is right there.
Okay, so then the 1% that comes in, it's 1% correct that comes in for the state? Is that the match?
It's supposed to be, but they don't fund it.
Yeah. It's not always funded, so it's difficult to say what's going on.
So whether it did or didn't, that, let's say we did get it, we wouldn't lose that, and then it comes into our accounts, and it can, if we need, if we decide, we can hold that, those funding into our, on our accounts.
Yeah.
Until a sufficient, sufficiently historic property repair public kinda comes up, and then we can take care of it then.
Correct.
Okay, good to know.
So, if, for this specific request, I'll just state for the board and the public's knowledge that when the American Revolution was won, and the United States became the United States, the church, prior to that, the churches were owned by the government. Okay, they were part of, they were part of the community. Pembroke could not have been a town unless it had a church to found the town.
Correct.
That's how, that's how New England towns began. You couldn't have a town unless you had a church. So after the revolution, the separation of church and state, the churches were handed over to the religious entities. But for, back then, you can imagine, not anyone had a watch, the clock was very important to, to the function of the community. So, in nearly, when it first happened, every single church clock was owned by the town. And some churches, some towns have passed them on through the years, but the town of Pembroke has maintained that clock, possession of that clock, maintenance of that clock. When the clock was struck by lightning, the town of Pembroke had to pay for it. We have, and you'll see, you'll see at town meeting, we pay a town clock winder, the town does, to climb up that ladder a couple of times a week to wind the clock.
About $1,000 a year, right?
It's only $1,000 a year. It's only a thousand dollars a year. It's really a stipend, but, so the town pays to have someone literally go up, climb up that ladder into that attic space, and if you've never been there, I suggest you do. It's amazing. And he, what he does is pull the chains for the weights, because when the weights hit the bottom, now you have to crank them back up. So I understand, I understand your trepidation about the town paying for private property. In this case, it's a shared property, all right?
And that's why I'm, and that's why I'm in favor of this one, is because of the significant historical value and the nature of the property itself.
And we have, we have in the past, as you know, funded the Sewing Circle Building, for instance, which houses a museum. So that's of public interest. It's a private entity, but it's of public interest. So when, when we are funding projects for a private entity, it's more than just giving a private entity special treatment. It's for the greater good of the public. And that's how I look at it. So I would not take the viewpoint of, nope, the town is not paying for any private, private entity. We're not doing it. If there's a, if there's a greater overarching good from that private entity that benefits the public, I'd look favorably in that.
I look forward to those debates as to where that line is crossed.
Actually, I'd like to bring up something on this with that line, because I agree with Steve. I'm not going to oppose this. Would it be reasonable, because this does get a little sticky, would it be reasonable to ask for their finances and see if this is a need? Because, does the line stop at the roof, or could it go to the heating system as well?
So likely not the heating system, you know, for these types of properties. It is a challenge. It is a, it is a line that we need to determine as an organization. One of the things I will say is the town is protected. We protect our interests because it is allowed under the statute, number one, and we require a deed restriction that gives us first rate of refusal in case if they fail financially, that we would actually have, be, take possession of the property. So we are somewhat protected. This one's kind of a no-brainer for me. There's probably, maybe in future years, someone will come up that I won't support. They'll still go before CPC and still come before you. I just won't recommend it.
So there's also, there's also a check on this system, where the CPC committee vets every one of these projects, and there are projects that come before them that they refuse because they just, they don't, they don't, they don't pass the muster. So that can happen. So, so there is, there are some guardrails to it, is my point.
There's, I think, some other, some other towns where the way that they use their CPC funds is, if someone's put towards, you know, someone, someone owns a private property that's deemed historical, and then they get CPC funds, $20,000, then there's some kind of deed restriction or something where if they sell that property, that has to be refunded back to the town.
The CPC funding.
The CPC funding, yes, with interest. You know, that's something that would make sense to package into it as well. I'm not saying that's the answer, but I think that it's worth looking into how other towns do it in some of these cases. Again, I think the First Church is a very special case where, you know, to Bill's judgment on this, I think is perfectly fine. I agree with it. But I, I do think that there should be strong guardrails around that. And it's easy to say, depending on what your values are, or my values, or someone else's values, that this is a greater public good, but it's really hard to know where that line is for different people. That's why I'm very much in favor of very strong guardrails around public to private entities.
Right, right. And if there's, if, I don't see any in this town meeting, but if any come, any come before this board that you have a question or a trepidation about, we can call the CPC committee in here and have them explain why they have recommended these to us, so that you can get a little more information before you vote. We didn't ask that in this case. I didn't think that would, well, I honestly didn't think that there would be this much of discussion on $25,000 to fix the church roof. I hope we have the same amount of discussion on the $78 million budget we're going to talk about.
I like Bill's policy he has in place and his judgment, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay, so we've heard the town manager's explanation and recommendations. What is the pleasure of the board?
How are they numbered now? I'm a little lost on that, since renumbering occurs, it looks like...
So 14, 16, 18, and 20.
These are the numbers?
12, 12 through 14, 16 singularly, 18 through 20. Those are the ones, and they're on this, this sheet that's in here.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 12, 13, 14, 16, 18 through 20. Second.
All right, most made second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. Votes approved the minutes of March 20th, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I only have one correction on the announcement for the American Legion event with the Tuskegee Airmen. I'd like to put in Howard Carter's name into that, because I know it was discussed.
And is that your motion?
Yes, it is, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Town managers' budget presentations. All right, Bill, your remarks.
I'll finish my note taking here. Thank you, everyone. We have several budgets. Some of our more hefty budgets this evening on our agenda. Please go ahead. There we go. Perfect.
Look how clear that is.
I know, it's pretty. Thank you, Tracy. Tracy is my focus person. She makes sure we are in focus, because sometimes they come in here and we're not. So we are, this evening, going to be talking about several budgets. Police Department, Animal Control, Fire Department, Emergency Management, Recreation Department, Council on Aging, Town Landing, Community Center, Pembroke Public Library, Veteran Services, Board of Health, Harry Fishery's, and Lydia Drake, Byburn. Couple of department heads are not available tonight because they're on vacation, so I will be covering those for them. And if the board has specific questions for them, we can actually ask them to come back at your next meeting. So getting right into it, I'm going to, I'm going to actually stand up, because walking around, I can point at people. So Police Department is the first budget. It is a request for four...
Stay by the microphone, please.
Yep. It's a request for $4,732,517. This is not the request that they obviously wanted. They asked for significantly more, unfortunately, like all the budgets you've seen. Some budgets are actually going up. This budget is, on the salary side, actually going up, but it's not to the level of the original request. You know, so we are, everybody's experiencing somewhat of that same pain because of our revenue estimates. So here's all of the salary side for a total of $4,403,587. Just about, in fact, everything on this list is a contractual application. So police expenses, you can see that this number is actually going down. I'm sure that if the chief had his way, it wouldn't go down, but unfortunately, as I said, with our revenue estimates, that is the case. Some of those, some of the numbers that, some of the numbers that are going down aren't going to be a significant impact, or we're hoping that there won't be a significant impact. We're going to watch them very, very closely. Things, you know, that are flat, like water, probably is going to be okay. Others are a concern, and we will do like we're doing with every other department. We will put them on our priorities list and be somewhat concerned. I'm going to highlight one that I know the chief will probably discuss anyway, because he has a freeze on certain capital. So the chief isn't getting two new cruisers in our capital budget this year. So vehicle maintenance line is funded flat, and the 23 actual was significantly above our funding. So I know the chief has concerns about that. I recognize those concerns, and we are adding that to our priority list. I just want to get focused to that with the board. So that's it. The total police budget request, 4.7 million, just over 4.7 million, and I'll introduce to you our police chief, Rick McDonald.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Kathy, for representing Pembroke and sticking up for that gap. We are missing one. I'll get yourself another one of my favorites. All right, so we talked about typically a couple of line items we go in the red almost every year. We had executive session last year about the overtime budget, and then sometimes even the training budget. The overtime budget is, which you all agreed on, is when our minimum manning gets below a certain level, we have to hire overtime. And if we're down several officers for whatever reason, that's going to create this problem going there, because it's only funded for a full force that way. A couple of things we don't see is that we can't control that, number one, and number two, specialized training. We have veteran in service training every year, and that requires, based on post commitments now with the certification, basically every officer has to have a certain amount of training, and it comes to roughly about $125,000 unfunded mandates by the state. So when you have $170,000 training budget, you know that's going to go in the red, based on, go ahead.
Not everybody's going to know what post is. Can you just tell them so they understand what post is? These guys probably do, but the folks in the audience won't.
So the new post standard has basically come down a couple of years ago, based on what's going on in the country. The requirement's now added probably to each officer of 18 to 24 hours of extra training on top of the thought that we know who they're going to have. So that turns out pretty significant, so $125,000. A post at 1.65, $170,000, and that's changed. Specialized training, we're involved with the semelics. Are you familiar with the semelics? Operations is regional, specialized units based on tactical teams, motorcycles, dive, search and recovery. Those are, those are like having fire extinguishers. We may not have all those problems in Pembroke, but if we do, we have all those forces with us represented coming here, helping for whatever that need is. So it's very important to have that kind of unity. Put my glasses on. I didn't need glasses up until the eclipse this week, so... I used one of those calendars. The other thing we have is we have three people that are actively in the military. And with the new standard with military time off, it's 40 days a year, not counting anything above and beyond that. If they get activated, that's not funded at all. So those 40 days a year, every day they take is a fill, because that's where our manning's at. So when one person's out, it's 100% fill in overtime. That takes over $70,000 into our overtime budget, which is really not factored into that, because we didn't, we never had three at one time. And I'm, you know, a military guy, 37 years, I get it. I'm not speaking for biases now. I'm speaking for the people that are actively doing it right now. Our staff, if you think about this, in 1998, we were 33 full-time officers. That's where I started. We are now, what, 2024, and I'm down to 30. And we all know with the last 26 years, the town has only grown. Calls for services have only grown. The demands for services have only grown with the mental health issues and all those other things that we never dealt with before. Sections is almost every single day that draws from our pool. So if we even go lowering our manning, we're looking at mutual aid, we're looking at delays in response to those, where it's not only a public safety issue, it's an officer's safety issue. The other thing is, if you look at other demographics of towns similar to us, a lot of them have more personnel, for instance, Margefield, 2,000 more than us, but they have four lieutenants, a captain, and six sergeants. I have one lieutenant, a deputy chief, and myself. So where the command staff lies, it's hard for us to get into the clear standards and get the things that we need to be certified in that area, especially moving into a new building, where we can meet that with the requirements of a structure. But personnel-wise, it's never going to happen. And I'm literally just band-aid approach to a lot of things, and that's not really where we should be. I at least need another lieutenant, a sergeant that works upstairs and detectives with two other detectives, so it's not all going down the personnel, and not just responding calls and taking reports, but solving some of the crimes or issues that they have. And what we also don't understand is we fund the SRO at the school 100%. It's about $125,000. If you think about it, there is a lot of towns that did my homework. Schools paid some part of that to 100% of it. It just depends on what town you're talking about. And I love the idea of having one there, because I'd see the benefits of that. But at some point, we either fund it 100% or we have the schools help us out. I know they're having problems too, so I'm not trying to put them on the light, but that's where we're at with that. He talked about the capital requests. And if you see on the line items, we don't have cruisers on there as a line item. Sometimes have it as a regular thing, two cars, three cars, whatever the needs are for replacements. We rely on capital requests. And because we might not get it this year, there's so much going on, to no fault of anybody here, the fact is, I'm not ordering two cars. So, and if you know about the supply chain, say it got approved in May, and I order it two weeks later, it's six months to a year, and that's a good time, meaning the supplies for the vehicle, there's delays in that. So even though they might have the vehicle, to equip it is a different story. So it could take up to a year and a half. Now we're looking at almost two years with our cars. And with the cars coming on a regular basis, what you don't know is before we were putting band-aids on old cars. They were breaking down all the time. We were paying a lot more in maintenance, and then, it's obviously an officer's safety issue. But what we do is, we drive these cars seven days a week, 24 hours a day. It's not the wear and tear that you guys have in your personal vehicles. A lot of people think that way, but that's not the case. Plus, we ride them a little high. We go fast calls because we have them. So that wear and tear happens. So we want to take these front cars off the line within 100,000 miles, two years, whatever comes for us, put them back line so they're not utilized as much. They save on maintenance, and then we get vehicles that are more up to date and better equipped, and they won't break down, and they're covered under warranty. And then the third line of cars that we get rid of, we sell, and we get a better return on our investment, based on the company we use right now when we ready to get rid of them. So that's my spiel. If you have any questions, I'm open for anything you have to ask.
So, Chief, it sounds like you and the town manager have come to an agreement on a bare-bones budget that you can live with for public safety and officer's safety. But they're about halfway through the year or so. We need to start keeping an eye on overtime, training expenditures, so that if we see a red flag coming, if we see a cliff that we're going to go over, that we can act before it's too late. And we'll, we'll see what the, by then, we'll have the legislator's, legislator's budget in hand, and we'll know exactly what we have. Right now, it's so difficult to build a town budget when you don't know what the state funding is. So it's a bit of a guessing game, using historical facts, but every year something changes. So if you can live with it, your department can live with this budget that we're going to ask for at town meeting, and then we'll keep an eye on it as the year progresses. I think that's the best thing we could do at this time.
I mean, to your point, we talked before about this. It's kind of a shell game. So what happens is, when we're going in the red, and we're in the red in the overtime right now, but we're down a couple of offices, so we're kind of saving on salaries there a little bit, is one, we're still funding based on a disposition for retirement. So that's kind of saving us a little bit. So I'm always looking at that. So I'm looking at trends. I'm looking at things I can move around. And then we'll get to the expense side that we save. That'll be a Mike Buckler thing, that we move that money around to keep in the black. But the big picture is, that does save us, but it stops us from using that funding for other things that we need, for the tools to do our job. But it'll at least get the officers on the road to do a job, which is our primary function. And if I have to move detectives down to work patrol, that's what we have to do. If I have to stop using semelit for helping a region, that's what I'm going to have to do. So we do have a pecking order. We do have a plan. Big picture is, I'm always advocating for what I think the town needs, what we need. So on record, this is where we want to go. Everybody here's been working on this. I'm definitely heading resistance. The collaboration is definitely huge, and I appreciate that.
Very good. Any of the board members have a question for the chief of the town manager on this budget?
Yeah, I have, I have one. When you brought up military service, what's the difference between the mandatory, where they're deployed out, to voluntary? Because I know that sometimes they actually pick up some service and it's sticking to the department. Do you have any say over that?
Yes and no. So I can have influence having, you don't want, you don't want to use your authority to tell them not to do that, because then, being in the military 37 years, working at Heckways, you can get jammed up with that. The ESGI protects them from a lot of these things. It depends on what resources they, like for instance, back when the governor was using them for bus driving, nursing homes, food supplies. Day or wrong, federal Title X orders, you really can't control that. And it's up to the discretion of the agent general for town, who I still talk to all the time. And I've gotten people off that based on some of the issues that we had with the charge of manpower and with other towns. But the big thing is, if they really want to go on orders, it's hard to tell if they were voluntaried or they were told to do it, because the orders don't say that.
And then with the student resource officer, I know that training for being student resource officer is usually grant-funded. Are, are, how many people on our...
No, that's not the case.
Okay.
SRO, no. Comfort dog, yes.
Okay.
Which we're transitioning. So as our SRO currently is ready to retire in the next couple of years, he's transitioning back to shift during the fall. And a comfort dog, which we're using right now, is under grants that will help transition that with training, which is paying for now, and overtime. So that's a huge help. So the comfort dog will actually be the SRO working in the school too.
Thank you. Chief, I have a question. A town our size, but where should we be personnel-wise? And is it, is it going to become a liability at some point? Because we do have seven units slated for over here and some other expansion coming. When do we, when do we have that discussion?
Good point, Rich. If you look at the growth of the town potential, we know it's probably going to happen. We just couldn't forecast that for the money this year, based on the country club, possible development on 53, in the center. And that's people, right? And people who need resources, usually police and fire. And fire's tapped and it's mostly medical, but the fact is, you hear those ambulance running all day. You hear our cars running all day. So yeah, the growth of the town, which has the ability to grow significantly in the next three to five years, we should be close to 40 full-timers. We do have a good bench right now for part-timers, and that helps. But that's really, again, it's not a solid approach. You know, ultimately, if I talked about, again, this command staff where we should be, to be proactive, and then two extra patrol, person extra up and detectives to solve some of these crimes quicker, it would definitely help us. 36 to 40, easily.
And we have how many now?
Right now, we're down to basically 29, 30, because one's still a little bit. So we're down three. We're getting one back, and we're hiring two as we speak. And we're actually starting the process in a couple of weeks with the interviews.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Phil, do you have anything else?
Good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So next up is animal control. So obviously, same story. The request was higher than what the actual were able to accommodate. You know, there's some things here that are important. The biggest cut is to the on-call employee. It's a restrict, unfortunately, it's someplace where we have to restrict. This is a budget that's very challenging that if you cut something, it's a significant impact to the town as far as animal control is concerned. So that was the one area that I was comfortable cutting. Other than that, I'm not comfortable 100%. Obviously, we will continue to put these on our priorities list and go there. I want to make sure that everybody is aware. We fund at 93, 299. We also fund for, for benefits and other items within our town. This is a shared service between us and the town of Hanover. We have an inch municipal agreement. We are the host community, and Hanover pays half of our total costs for animal control and gets, obviously gets services. Otherwise, they wouldn't pay anything. So that's the budget. I'm happy to introduce, do you want to comment, Leanne? It's up to you. You don't have to.
If you have questions, that's my turn.
Okay, so Leanne is our animal control officer. If, Leanne, if anybody has questions, she's here.
So the first question is the obvious one. We share the service with Hanover. Are we both paying the same amount?
Well, yes, for the most part. There's, there's a couple of times where we will do some type of, a small capital item where Hanover doesn't participate in that. But, but this budget, they pay absolutely half of that. They pay half of the benefit cost associated with that. So, so yes.
Very good.
So to clarify, they are paying half of this, or is this half of what the total is?
This is, we are the host community, so we fund 100% of the cost, because we have to budget for the cost. But we get as a receipt half of that cost. It's in the revenue side. If you want, I can show you where that, I don't have it with me tonight, but I can point it out for you.
That's fine. Thank you. Any other questions on this budget?
Okay. If you folks want to leave, you don't have to stay. I know you guys get to work much earlier than I do in the morning, so you're happy to stay if you want. to stay if you want, but please, once you're done, you can go. So next up is fire, fire, the request for fire is $4,298,630. This is the employee side, or the staffing side of fire, and all of this associated with it. Like police, this is 100% contractual obligation, so, that number is just over $4.1 million. And it, we have collective bargaining in a contract with the chief in place, so there isn't anything here that's an unknown. Second half of fire is expenses, here. Again, it's, there's a bit of a challenge there, some of the items, we were forced to look at, didn't make sense to not go there. So if you look at general maintenance, it's going, general maintenance is going to be a problem, we are not going to have the new fire station done timely, they're going to be in fiscal 25, in that old station over there, so we're going to have to, to do that. And then again, as we go down, you can see where equipment was in the actual expenses in 2023, and what we're budgeting for in 2025, so it made absolutely even know, we needed to make certain cuts, it didn't make sense to do that. These are certainly cut from where the chief had, would like to be, but it's, it's a budget year-over-year increase. So, happy to introduce Chief Jason Vivieros, if the board has any, Jason wants to make any comments, or if the board has any questions for him.
Thanks for having us. I'll be real brief, I think Bill did a good job presenting the budget. He had asked initially for a level service budget, which we presented, we made some significant cuts to that, but I think he did a great job in identifying some areas, you know, such as wages with the call department, our call department has really reduced in numbers, we haven't added to that, so I think there was a $20,000 or $30,000 cut from that. The other one's overtime, you know, we've been, that one's always scary, because we've been fortunate not to have a lot of long-term injuries, and I think, what, over the past three years, we haven't had any real big weather-related incidents, but one storm can cost us $10,000. So it's always a, you know, a balance, and as the police chief noted, staffing is certainly an issue, those ambulances are out every day, all day. Three times today, I was on the ambulance, so, I mean, that's how deep we're getting to the point, when the chief has to be the guy driving the ambulance, in a community of this size, and I think that speaks to what the staffing issue, the staffing issue is. But, yeah, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to.
Just one comment, new toy, want to talk about it?
We did get a new ambulance today, so, yeah, it was, outgoing calls about five minutes after I was in service.
I shouldn't call it a toy, because it's a much-needed toy, right, guys?
It's more billing.
Yeah, yep.
I guess same question to you, kind of, where are we staff-wise, and where should we be, go, you know, going forward?
Yes, you look, you look at Hanover, Duxbury, are, there's similar towns to us, you know, Duxbury's smaller, has the same staffing on duty as we do. We have seven on shift, and that includes one doing dispatch. Marshfield, not much difference in size, they have 11 on shift, so that gives you some type of, you know, what's, what's scary is, we highly, we really depend on our recall system, and you never know what you're going to get. Sometimes we get people back, sometimes we don't, so like, you know, even a day like today, we might get one or two people to come back, but when we're running those ambulances to the, all three of them are out simultaneously, every day. We have one at Children's Hospital today, so, once that ambulance leaves and go to Children's Hospital, that's three to four hours where we don't see, you know, where that crew is out of town. And, you know, the same, just going to South Shore Hospital, the wait time, the, because of the hospital situation, I don't, you know, we don't need to get into detail on that, but we lost Brockton Hospital, and all the hospitals are overwhelmed, so, we'll have crews that are standing, waiting to get the patient off the stretcher, for an hour sometime. So, you know, they're out of service for two to three hour, two to three hours doing one ambulance call, and that's why we're getting so, you know, during the day, we're so busy with the urgent care medical centers in town, that really, you know, have, over the past couple of years, added significant.
Yeah, they absorb a lot of your, your time. Because of their procedures, they have to call you in?
Yeah, once someone goes to a doctor's office, if they have a chest pain or something, and, you know, those people get sent out, they, that's the policies of them, is to send them by ambulance, because they're, you know, they're a risk, you know, a liability to them at that point, if they don't send them by ambulance, so.
Whenever I see overtime, I always think, do we, is it cheaper just to hire a few more people?
Yeah, it's always, that's always the balance that needs to be, to be figured out, is where that line.
And then, we benefit from those two people, or three people.
Sometimes, you know, so that's, that's the thing, is what, is one thing to hire people just to save the overtime, or if you're going to have more people on shift, so, and I think that's a balance, something that we want to look at, you know, there's, there is some grant opportunities out there, that will cover the cost for a certain amount of years, but once those three years are done, then you own that cost, so that's something that has to be, Bill and I have discussed that before, like that's something that needs to be in a long ra, it needs to be in a long-range plan, to know how you're going to absolve that cost, that cost three years from now.
Yeah, because if I could expand on the, the balance that he's speaking of, the chief's speaking of, is that, sometimes it's better to pay overtime to a certain extent, because if you hire people, then you own all their post-employment benefits. It's, it's, it's cheaper for the town to pay overtime, to a certain point, when it gets overwhelming, when the chief's driving the ambulance, that we have to start asking questions, but if you keep hiring people, then it, the, the town is on the hook for costs throughout their career and after retirement. So that's, that's the balance that he's speaking of.
And with our aging population, you, do you forecast maybe another ambulance?
Once we have two stations, I definitely want to keep another ambulance. Now, part of that is that we always have the three in service, and, you know, whether we'll have the staff to actually, you know, get that one out the door all the time, we don't know, but, you know, we have another big development coming in town, that's going to be geared towards seniors, and we know that with the aging population, that's where we see our call volume increase, so, the problem's not going to get any better, it's definitely, but I think we're at that point now, where it's something we need to seriously look at, the staffing level.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a huge proponent of what the chief just said, I've done it in my two previous communities, and that's when you take a piece of equipment that's in okay shape, not perfect, got lots of mileage, you keep it, so that when an ambulance goes out of service for maintenance, you have an ambulance to do that. I'm a proponent of doing that for a ladder. We don't have a spare ladder now, if our ladder truck goes down, we're, you know, using mutual aid or borrowing a ladder, so.
Very good. Are there any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, I have one more.
Sure.
Basically, what is the average monthly mutual aid calls that basically either we do, or that we get from other communities?
On a, on a monthly basis?
Yeah, I'd say monthly would be your best bet.
We have, you know, there's, it's probably, give and take, 30, you know, almost every day, we're going, either, we're either going mutual aid somewhere, or we have an ambulance coming in mutual aid. So we're, we're using the mutual aid system constantly. We were at a fire in Duxbury last, this week, we had multiple medicals where we both went mutual aid to Kingston, Marshfield, Duck, Hanson, so, every day, you know, and that's how communities try to survive. We, we help each other out when we can, and we, you know, we, Plymouth County has really made the most of the mutual aid system.
As long, as long as it's reciprocal.
Yeah.
And one town is mooching off another. I've heard both police and fire chiefs say that.
I saw a Duxbury ambulance in Pembroke today.
They were.
But I wanted to make sure the public knew that, that this is what we do.
Absolutely, and that's what helps to keep the cost somewhat down, is the fact that we all help each other out, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, chief.
Okay, next up is emergency management. This one's somewhat flat, down $500 on the expense side. Department heads are, you know, it's a small stipend that gets paid, it's split between three different individuals, believe it or not. If you're not aware, our emergency management staff is Chief Vivieros, Deputy Chief Wendy Lapierre, and our Board of Health Agent Lisa Colady, all make up our emergency management leadership team. They do a terrific job, and because we're cutting everywhere else, obviously, we made a cut here, just from a fairness question, if you look at, at that, you can see that if you look at the actual expenses in the telephone line item, the cut really should not have an impact, so. Folks are here, if you have some questions, or I can probably answer any questions you may have on this, or we can move on if you have no questions. No? Okay. Moving on, next up is recreation, I want to take and talk about this in a little bit of detail, we are actually changing our recreation department a little bit. We are moving to a community services model, like many of our similar-sized neighbors, or most of our similar-sized neighbors, and, and most of Commonwealths of our, most of communities of our size within the Commonwealth, where you have a department head who serves overall as the community services director, and then you roll departments under that. Currently, what we're going to be doing is Lance Kennedy will be serving as the recreation director slash community services director, and we're, we're keeping the model, so there's zero impact to the other departments, but Lance will be running the operations at the community center, so that other folks don't have to, especially with Gretchen's departure. I assume everybody is in the loop that Gretchen Evans is leaving us, I was going to, we'll talk about that when we get to their budget, but, so we're going to, council on aging, the beaches and Town Landing, Lance has had significant experience with lifeguards and such, so, that is a major player in the town of Pembroke, with our, with our lifeguards on our beach, and with the swim lessons. So I am pleased to make sure that the board understands that rollout. This is one of the budgets that, although there's cuts, and Lance will be highlighting them, I'm sure, we felt with the rollout of the community center, we needed to make sure that we at least covered where we're going with that. So, I'm actually going to move on, well, I'll, go ahead Lance, if you want to. Yeah, so what we'll do is, we'll save questions on recreation and community center until we get to the community center. So next up is council on aging, same story, some of the cuts, like heating fuel, but, you know, as I think about it, we're going to be using that building, and we're going to have to do something with the heating fuel there, we'll roll it into our overall budget for support for buildings, but those items that you see where they're going to zero, are actually going to be picked up by the new building. They're not, they're not really going to zero, they're just shifting to another budget. So, and then the other budgets, you know, contracted services, one of the things we're doing is that, that the internet service will be part of new buildings, it's already there, it's already connected to this building, so we're only paying one bill for internet, you know, trying to work through that and save some funds overall. So although you see a significant cut here, some of those items are picked up in other budgets, or there's a, even where they aren't, there's, there's a cost savings, because the service is picked up in another way. So we have a very robust pipe into this building now, that is now shared with the community center, will be shared with other departments as we move forward in our overall plan for that, so. Did I miss a slide here? They're just in reverse order. So, council on aging, 340, 707, this is the, the budget. Keep in mind that some of these numbers look a little strange, some of these are grant-funded, so that where they're at, there's funding from other resources within this budget, so. At that, I wanted to say a very, very heartfelt thank you for Gretchen. You know, she is one of those department heads that you get tremendous accolades from the public for. So you're going to, I'm going to give you that opportunity, but, but let me give my speech first. Bill, come on up, Gretchen. Gretchen, come on up, come on up, please. But, I just want to personally thank Gretchen, Gretchen has been a terrific resource to the town of Pembroke. You know, people speak incredibly highly of her, and I, you know, when people leave communities, I always, especially people like Gretchen, I always like to be able to call them, but unfortunately, it's a long-distance call. So, with that, I will introduce Gretchen, she can talk about her budget if she wishes, or she could just, you know, talk about your experience.
Hi, no, thank you. So our budget's pretty much the same every year, it's just going to change a little bit because of the way the center is going, but I think this is, you know, my husband and I were looking at it, and with everything going on, I thought this was the best time for us to do what we want to do, maybe play some golf. So, I, I just want to say that I have learned so much from the residents, from the employees here, from our state reps, over the past four and a half years, and it wasn't always easy. COVID came in, and we had to rethink everything, and I appreciate all the support that I got from the board, and the residents financially and personally during that time, but I am going to miss Pembroke, it's a great town, and it's way better to work in a town that you don't live in, just saying.
So, before we leave the council on aging budget, I want to take this opportunity to introduce someone else to the, to the select board this evening. I have been working to fill Gretchen's position, and I am going when Gretchen departs in less than a month now, that's scary, right?
Couple of weeks.
Yeah, wow. I am going to be making an interim appointment, Marie Vitale, Marie is here this evening. She currently works at the council on aging, also comes highly recommended from her constituency. So, that's, that's always a positive, so, everyone, Marie, if you want to say something, you don't have to, I won't put you on the spot, just wave and say, hello, everyone, Marie Vitale.
Hi, everybody, thank you, I've been working as the outreach coordinator for the past three years in Pembroke. And, yeah, Gretchen, I will miss her tremendously, because she's been a great mentor so far of learning all I need to know to take our council on aging into the next so many years, so I'm excited about it, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I just say one other thing, Chief, Rich, to you? We do have a really large aging population here in town, and it's really because, they're aging in place because they can't afford to do anything else. So, that's really important, because I bet you, I don't know how many calls, probably of those a day, are people 60 and older here in the town, so always keep that in mind with the budget. We have about 4,400 now of our residents that are over 60, and they are, they are considered elder, so please keep that in mind, and I don't think I'm supposed to mention this, but I may. The building itself, I've worked very hard on, I know that people have put in different requests for the building, but I have put together a budget, submitted it to Bill, I've worked on it with several people for a daycare center for those with Alzheimer's, because we're seeing a huge struggle for people that live here, residents that live in, here in town, that are taking care of their spouse, or their mother, or their father, that they have Alzheimer's, and there's no place for them to go. So this would present, that current building that we're in now, is already set up to do that, plus, we would be paying, or whoever, if, you know, anyone thinks about it, could make money for the town of Pembroke. And it wouldn't be expensive, it's $60 a day for six hours, that's less than you pay a babysitter for your child. So, something to think about, and it was also mentioned in the 2004 master plan, just saying.
So, just to be clear, you'll be hearing from those organizations at your next meeting, or at least from me, based on the plans that have been submitted for the use of that building, so.
Will we be hearing, I know that there's the citizens petition about the building, I know that's a little bit out of scope for this now, but we never really got a chance to talk about it, is that?
Tom for the 24th.
What's that?
Tom for the 24th.
It is on for the 24th, okay.
Yep.
Will they be presenting a presentation?
We're going to ask. I know that, I know that the two groups that have, that have been vying for use of the building have both given me a significant report and presentation on how they would use that building, so I'm very pleased by that, which we will be sharing with the board, Next up, community center, and this is where I'll let Lance get to it. So this budget is completely new, because we went from nothing last year, or virtually nothing last year, within our budget structure, to, we're, or already have, and I will announce tonight, that we have received a temporary certificate of occupancy for that building, we just got it, and furniture is moved in, and we will be in a couple of weeks, gym floor is going down this week, so I'm super excited, you'll see some of the landscaping pieces going into play out there, they're working aggressively at that. Final paving, line striping, and then we'll move on, grand opening, we have confirmation from Congressman Keating's office, that he is available, that will be June 15th. We did have to change that date, but it will be June 15th, so. Having said that, this budget is based upon the study that was completed, plus a little, some adjustments that we had to make. One of the bigger adjustments, and I'll ask Lance to address that somewhat, as we talk about these items, is the monitor, the building monitor salary structure. We have the, in our building maintenance budget, the custodian salaries 100% with the building, however, the building monitor request was cut significantly on this budget, and part of that reason is, is because we think, it's going to take a little while to get up to speed, and we think we can cover that with some volunteers, and some of the programs that we have in place in town, so. At that, I will let Lance introduce that, and if the board wants to this evening, we can also discuss the programming, Lance has a presentation on programming if you want can also discuss the programming, Lance has a presentation on programming if you want, or we can skip that and move that to the twenty-fourth, it's really the pleasure of the Board.
Why don't we do that on the twenty-fourth? Because Lance, I'd like to, here are all of my, but we have a lot on our plate this evening.
Absolutely, completely understand. So just to piggyback on Bill's comments, so the basic budget that we, I presented to Bill, and then we toned down from, really was based off the engineering study, and so we're looking at those numbers, but then looking to see what we would need for coverage. We're excited with our partnership, and Marie's got so many exciting program ideas and things that we can do together, and she has, the COA has a great volunteer team, right, already built in, some great ambassadors. We're gonna try to tap into that, sort of as the building day flows, as you think about the COA is pretty strong during the morning hours, where the rec programs are in the evenings, we're gonna try to balance our schedules, so we can always make sure there's leadership in the building during that time. The goal was to make sure we had somebody managing the facility all the time, right, whether we're running leagues at night, we have open gym space, we have activities going on in the evening, on the weekends, we wanna make sure someone's managing the building. Yes, we'll have a custodial staff to help manage setting up events, making sure the building's clean for the community, but we also wanted another individual, making sure that person is there for asking, answering questions, making sure doors are open, those type of things, and obviously, security being a big piece of that, right? So right now, the toned-down budget is about eight hours a week we have to manage the building through that. So we're gonna get creative, we're gonna use our volunteers, and there's several programs, through the tax relief programs, and Gretchen was just sharing with me Citizens for Citizens, there's some possible other money there. So we're gonna look at all avenues, try to make sure we can do that. We've also looking at the opportunity, so the rec, as you know, has revolving accounts, and if we can get to a point where state camp is very successful this summer, I potentially have some money that we could use towards staffing to sort of manage that. We know it's gonna take time, and we'll talk more about this when we talk about programming, is as we build up the programming component, we know, from a programming guy, we're coming in in the summer season, that's probably the slowest time of the year for programming, people go on vacations, they do other things, so we'll sort of slowly introduce the programs as we go. So it's gonna take a little time to build, but come September, as we get back to life, hopefully we'll have a full-scale program, and at that point, we can start to generate some, some positive evidence to help pace for some of these things to do that. And obviously, when you saw the initial studies, it was probably about a three to five-year plan, and eventually this became self-sustaining. We hope that process will get there, if not sooner, as we grow programming within that. And we've, and we'll talk about sort of the different avenues that we can get, get us there when we talk about that. But really, I think, as you look at this particular operational budget and the structure of it, I think that's the biggest thing that we've gotta manage, and, and the challenge ahead of us is to making sure we have proper staffing for that facility.
Very good. So just so the Board is aware, you know, we think we can get there, but I do want to note that the, the building monitor salaries is one of our higher priorities, I think having a brand-new building, you wanna make sure that you have some paid staff there to monitor that. I had schools and this as basically one and one A, and then I had assessors and some of the others as we moved down. I met with the Board of Assessors Monday night, and they asked where they were on the priority list, and I, and I said, I, unfortunately, I have to put the Community Center and Recreation, not for your camp counselors, but for your building monitor people. And obviously, the schools, looks like we solved that, oh, Kathy left, so I'm very happy about that, I'm gonna make a call to Senator Moran, the others, Sue Moran, I should've introduced you, so I'm sorry, so are you still working for Josh?
Oh, I'm working for the sixth Plymouth District.
Okay, for that office. So those of you who don't know Sue, Sue works for the sixth Plymouth District, so she is a, was an aide for Josh, and has been very supportive of us over the years, so sorry about that, I see you sitting there, and I'm like, oh no, so, so awesome, we will get there, it's going to be a year or two years of, of making sure we keep a very close eye on all of our budgets, but we will make it work. So, thank you Lance.
Thank you Lance. Bill, this question for you, how does this budget align with what you estimated and promised at town meeting when we were asking for the Community Center?
So actually, this budget is slightly below that number, so we are, we are in pretty good shape for what we promised the residents we would be spending. If we did have the building monitors, it would've been almost identical to what we had promised. One of the things that we found was they had a very high number on their, on their fuel pieces, so we were able to reduce those based on our cost per therm and some of the electricity stuff. But generally, it's spot-on right where we had promised, so, and, and some of our revenue estimates, I forgot to point out when you did the Warren articles, but we've increased the recreation revolving number to a hundred and twenty-five thousand as a result of that study and what we think we can accomplish this year, so we're very pleased by that.
Very good. Does any member of the Board have a question for Lance or Bill on this?
He's gonna come back, you're gonna come in on the twenty-fourth, right?
Yes, it sounds like it.
Yeah, that's gonna be program, though. It's gonna not budget.
So when you think about the components, when we talk about the budget component, right, really, this is about how do we operate the building itself, right? So rec will manage sort of, who oversees the programming side, COA will work on those services, this is just the, how do you manage the building, keeping it open, lights, cleanliness, that piece, and then when it comes to the programming piece within that building, that falls under those each departments.
Revenue.
The revenue, all of that stuff, yeah, the rentals and all that good stuff. So yeah, this is just to keep it open, make sure it's safe, make sure it's managed, and that.
But just give you an opportunity Lance, that I'd like to have a broader discussion on it.
Yeah.
But if, if you only planned on a summary, you know, I don't wanna waste your time in another meeting, but I do think it'd be valuable to have it on the agenda ahead of time, so that people that do have questions for, for both the rec center and the Council on Aging, it's, it, I see it as being a broader discussion.
Absolutely, well, and, and I would love the platform, right? So I, I fill calls all day long, right, I, I see people in the street, they grab me and ask questions of what's going on, so I love to be able to use the platform and, and share and get the positive information out there as far as what is going on, so that way people are anxious, they're nervous, they're, there, there's a lot of confusion, there's a lot of different things out there, and I'd love to be able to share sort of what, where the plans are going, and how we can help meet the needs of the community when it comes to programming that way, so absolutely.
Very good, any other members have any questions? On, on the Community Center budget, does any member of the audience have a question? Yes.
So the two-hundred-thousand-dollar earmark for COA, will that help with some of the initial year funding, or where has that been allocated?
So it's not a two-hundred-thousand for COA.
Well, it's two-hundred-thousand for COA, and two-hundred-thousand for the, for the Center of Town, I wrote those earmarks.
It's a hundred-thousand for COA, two-hundred-thousand for the building, and two-hundred-thousand for the Center. We've already gotten fifty-thousand on the COA, that's basically for kitchen equipment, is how the Senate structured that in the end. So we've spent that, we're submitting for the rest of it, because the kitchen's now certified and stamped, so, so we will, we, we could not use any of those for operational costs, that, they were restricted to improvements to the Center. The kitchen, well, that's an operational cost, obviously, because we're doing that, but nothing for the, for the budget piece, based on.
Even the COA money?
COA money's restricted to the kitchen, correct? Am I?
Yes.
I'll take a look at the earmark, I don't think that's.
All right, very good, if there's no further questions, thank you Lance.
Thanks guys, another forty to the twenty-fourth.
Thank you Lance.
She's talking about the earmark that they took away, because of cares in the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's next, Bill?
So next up, let's, moving on, Town Landing, another one of Lance will be working with Amy Hill when Amy comes back. Amy is a seasonal employee who supervises our lifeguard. We want to have someone that focuses on not just the, the summer programs, but the facilities as a whole and the programs. So this is one of those budgets where if you cut the budget, you cut your revenue. So it's, so it's a kind of a catch-twenty-two, if we cut lifeguards, we don't get any revenue from the, the, one of our biggest revenue pieces from this program is in huge demand, as I found when I cut her budget back in twenty-two, that the swim lessons are a huge piece, so didn't cut it, because if we cut the, the, our costs, we're actually cutting our revenue significantly from the swim lessons, and deleting a very, very popular service that we provide our residents, so the budget is essentially the same as last year, not essentially, it's exactly the same as last year, so. Any questions on Town Landing? Go ahead.
Are we still thinking about the path forward towards consolidating the function of the Town Landing Committee underneath Mr.?
We are working on that, we, Town Landing is now part of Community Services.
Excellent.
So, Town Landing Committee still exists, that's an action that Town Meeting or the Board has to take to eliminate them, so, but we are, we, from an administrative management standpoint, we are, we're starting that consolidation.
Okay, and that's gonna be obviously not just Town Landing, but the beaches in general?
All, all of our beaches and those parks that are associated with them.
Excellent.
So, any questions on Town Landing?
How are we looking on applications for lifeguards? Because I know we had trouble.
So you will see when we talk about Article One, that we have made some significant adjustments as a result of not being able to, it's not just lifeguards, Kathy can talk about library folks, and we are adjusting that also, Lance can talk about some of our counselors, and there's a fourth category that I will present when we get to Article One next meeting. I forget what that is. Oh, recycling folks at the recycle center, all four of those positions were significantly below on our, on our comparables, when we do our, our study of salary study, and we've, we're forced to make adjustments. I mean, it's not huge adjustments from a budget standpoint, but it's significant from an individual per hour. So we will, we are obviously going there, you know, so we'll be able to get a full complement, we're hoping to be able to get a full complement of lifeguards.
Are we planning on doing both beaches again?
We're hoping to, we're hoping to, obviously, you know the story, last year, we're, we're gonna be making some improvements over there, so we hope to, we'll see after the application process in, in May and June, so. Any other questions there? Next up, Member of Public Library, Kathy Benve is here to talk about it. One of the most significant pieces that I, that I wanna talk, and I wanna thank the library trustees for, for voting to do this, because it did give us a little bit of budget flexibility that we wouldn't have had otherwise, and that is, if you look at the Sunday hours, it's now zero. We will not be opening the Pembroke Library on Sundays this year, that is the most significant cut that we see there from a service level. Obviously, a priority, not one of the top priorities, as we go there, it wasn't a huge loss from a use standpoint, and, you know, we're gonna encourage those folks to use the library on other days, Saturday or Monday through Friday, but it was a decision that we made, that the trustees voted to support, and I, I do wanna absolutely thank them about, for, for doing that. So these are contractual obligations, no, they're not all contractual, some are contractual obligations, the rest are part of our pay scale, so you can see that it's going up slightly, and the reason for that is that there are some grades that we, and realistically, we need to continue to monitor this, because we are still very, very close to not being where we need to be when it comes to that, and Kathy may address it if she chooses, or she may not, so. And then on the library expense side, one of the things that I, I wanna highlight here, you know, although the budget is going up slightly here, one of the things that's flat is the book budget, and, and I'm sure Kathy will talk about that also, so. Without further ado, do Kathy Bedvee from the library, total request, eight oh three one eleven.
Good evening.
Hello.
So the library is a building, it is materials and services offered to the public and its staff. The building, we have a new building that's twenty-five years old, but it is being taken care of, the, the most important needs are being met by the capital plan. Hopefully, going forward in the future, we can address some of the other needs that have knocked that into a crisis level, but we're doing okay. The materials and services offered is the book line that Bill alluded to, that line actually saw its first increase last year of twenty-five-hundred dollars, in the last six years, it's not, prior to that, it not had an increase. That budget we had talked about last year, and talked about hopefully every year, increasing it a little bit, because truthfully, that number is still so far below what we need to spend in our materials budget. We're dictated by the mass board of library commissioners every year to spend a certain amount of money that's appropriated from the municipal budgets, and fiscal twenty-four, our budget, we were supposed to spend over a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So we meet that need by other means, mainly, it's been through our passport fund. We're able to charge passport fees, and we use those funds to make up the difference in what we have to spend on the materials, but it's really not the best funding source, it's not a guaranteed source, and so we're going forward kind of depending on something that we can't depend on. So it is something that we do need to look at going forward, adjusting, and I know Bill and I have talked about this several times, and hopefully, after this year, we can go back to increasing that annually till it gets to a better, better level. But the other big piece is staff. In order to begin addressing some of this compensation inequities, we have looked at the budget and decided that Sundays were the thing that we could take away. It's just been something that over the years, since we started opening on Sundays, the use has gone down. Things have changed. Initially, when we opened on Sundays, we were usually flooded with people using computers, people didn't have Internet access in their homes, so that was one of the big drivers of people in traffic on Sundays. We now also have Wi-Fi, and we have Wi-Fi that goes out into the parking lot, so people, if they do have a problem with Internet, they'll just go park in the parking lot, and it's, it's on. So we, we've covered that piece, we studied it and decided that that money would be better put to use to start to address some of the compensation inequities in the library. So Bill and I have worked back and forth, I just want to stress, and he did say it, this is just a start. We really need to look at the salary levels of everyone in the library and address it so that we have a fair compensation, and that we continue to fairly compensate. What happens unfortunately is, we hire people, we spend the time training them, and then we lose them. They go to other towns where there are perhaps more full-time positions, or they're going to part-time positions that are better compensated and have partial benefits. We have a library that has seven full-time employees and nineteen part-time employees. Those nineteen part-time employees get, as I said, undercompensated, they get zero benefits, they can only work nineteen hours a week, and they get no paid time off. So we have people that want to stay with us that are forced to go to other communities. The result of that is we spend an awful lot of time training people, and we never make up that time, that time is lost when they're gone. So I would just like to say that I realize this year, we can only do so much, but it needs to continue to go on, going forward, and I do wanna thank Bill, he is, he's listened to me quite a bit, trying to, to explain why we need to make these changes, and why we do need to address these inequities. And if there's any questions?
Yes. How much longer do we have with you Kathy? I know you're interim director of the library, what are your plans and?
Well, we are advertising now for a library director, it's really hard to say how long that will take, I know we have a meeting with the trustees next week, we might get an indication how that search is going. I told Bill I would stay through the search process and the hiring, and then whatever crossover was needed, and then I retire.
Lucky, well. And then also the, the roof repairs.
Yes.
So I know you, it was mentioned that some of the capital spending is gonna take care of it, but.
We have estimates, and we are putting it forward, you'll see it on the town meeting request. Actually, you may not see it on the town meeting request, depending upon whether Sue Moran and this Representative Kathy will not to come through, because I've requested funding for library repairs and roofing as one of our earmarks this year, so we'll probably put it on capital just to cover that, but if the funding comes through, because we won't know that in time, so we'll need to do it to make sure we get it done, because we wanna do that over the summer months this year, so. But we have a certain, definite plan to, to fix the roof and the scuppers and some of the other things that are ongoing over there.
All right, thank you.
You had mentioned that you have some needs that are at critical levels, can you elaborate on a few of those?
Sure, so our windows over in the building really could use replacement, they've gotten, again, it's a beautiful building, and everyone's always shocked that it's twenty-five years old, but it's twenty-five years old. So we're definitely losing heat and cooling there, so from that standpoint, there's carpeting in the building in some areas, really, the non-public areas that needs to be replaced, but again, can be put off. The bathrooms, the bathrooms need a facelift. It's just, it's really mostly a, just an issue of aging, but we are taking care of things that have to be done, I know. I know another thing on Bill's list is our roof tuck units. We've spent a lot of time over the last couple of years repairing them, so.
Time and money.
Yeah.
So.
So that kind of thing.
One of the, certainly the building envelope, not just the windows, but the whole envelope itself. The carpets were one of the, like bruises were one of the hits that we're moving forward with this year. You'll see, you're going to see some library stuff. We just, it, it does not make sense. You've seen my scurvy, I'm sure. And if you haven't, as the building deteriorates, the cost to fix it increases. You want to catch it before it gets that cross point. We're unfortunately, a couple of areas over there, we're at that cross point now where we need to take some action. There's some other stuff that we can defer. Don't like deferring it, but it's, it's in an economic situation like we have today. Things that we have to defer and I, and I know Kathy said she enjoyed working with me. My staff sometimes will say, oh, Kathy's here again. Not really, but I've enjoyed working with Kathy. I really hate to see Kathy go. Kathy has been a tremendous resource to me with the library. So my accolade is 100% to her and, and her staff. I mean, I call over there, Kathy's not there and I have a question and always somebody steps up and answers a question for me. So they're, they're another one of those checkboxes for me that I don't have to spend a lot of time managing staff because they do a terrific job themselves, so.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Thank you Kathy.
Thank you.
Next up, Lydia Drake Library. We don't have representatives from there. We've actually done a lot of capital work. We actually had an earmark from legislature on this a couple of years ago to get that building back up to snuff. We had a challenge earlier this fiscal year with some critters that basically took down the electrical components for about half of the building. So you will see that bottom line there, contract services, that is for dealing with critters, as, as I refer to them. We added it slightly in '23, bumped it up in '24. Unfortunately, we have to cut it, but that $300, $300 gets us what we need. We've taken steps to fix those problems and correct the problems where they were getting in, so they're not there anymore. We've rewired that section of the library and so I'm comfortable with a $200 cut there. But again, and this budget is so small, there isn't a lot of places to cut. And if you cut it, you're, you're, you're cutting back on resources. It's used a lot more than I thought it was. You know, there are, there are meetings there, there are people going there for reading and other programs, certainly not as much as the Pembroke Public Library, but it is a resource that, that we frequently hear from the people that use it. So, any questions on Lydia Drake? Okay. Moving on, Board of Health. Again, another budget that is challenging. When you, when you start to cut these budgets, you're cutting significant services to people that can't otherwise do. Lisa isn't here. Unfortunately, she went on vacation. I should have canceled it, but anyway, I'm joking about that obviously. People, people deserve vacations and should take them. She had asked for significantly more money. She wanted to ramp up a couple of areas. Nursing services and inspectional services. We're hoping to be able to tap into some other resources to get there. This is a slight increase in their budget. Again, if you, if you start to cut these things, you're, you're cutting significant services from the community and/or on the inspectional piece, restaurant safety and other safety where their food services is, is happening. So certainly don't want to do that. You know, it, it is what it is. And then the vehicle maintenance piece, I, this is one area I debated heavily. They have a very, very, very old vehicle that's really not usable. I debated taking the vehicle 100% off the road and just eliminating that $350. In the end, I didn't do it. The vehicle serves a purpose for us and I think we'll use it as long as we can where it goes. And that vehicle finally is 100% dead. I'm not sure where I'll be with that, but for this year, we're going to maintain that. So, any questions on the Board of Health?
Yeah, so the inspectional services, is that being refunded through fees on the revenue side?
So there, there is revenue for that. Obviously, you, you charge a fee for licensing and some of the other stuff that we do. So yes, it is. And that's, you know, exactly what I was talking about. We want to make sure that we're doing those services, but it's also a requirement. If we miss those inspections, we're not collecting those fees either, so, yes.
I don't know if it'd be appropriate to ask a question regarding the budget.
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to know if the Massachusetts statewide opiate settlement funds that are, I believe, Mr. Shonar is a CPO for, are scheduled, if, I just would like to know some information if they're going to hit on fiscal year '24 and where would those be reflected in the annual budget?
They won't, they won't be reflected in the budget because we can't use them in the budget legally. There, there are specific purposes you do. We're going to be forming a committee. We have started to receive it. We actually started this, this is March, talking with the treasurer collector and where, how we're going to handle those funds. We're going to form a committee and, and talk about that and the Board of Health will be involved in that discussion. We will likely be doing that before the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, Bill?
Okay. Moving forward, Veteran Services. I didn't require them to be here. They both work really hard and, and our department head doesn't get paid a whole lot for what he does. He doesn't, has not accepted large salary increases. We've done minimal salary increases for him, but I can't say enough about this department. It's another one of those departments where they check the box for me. I don't get complaints. In fact, this department is one of the departments where I frequently get people walking in the office saying, hey, I just want to tell you how great David is, or I just want to tell you how great your staff is in, in the veterans. Mary is, is wonderful. I don't know if those of you who deal with Veteran Services on a time understand that. Those of you who don't, take my word for it. These folks do a remarkable job for our veterans to the point where we have veterans from other communities that come and ask for help from the Town of Pembroke. So wonderful job for the funds that we're getting. Not cutting this budget, I'd be cutting Veteran Services if I did cut this budget. I absolutely refuse to do that. And a lot of that Veterans Benefit Line is refunded to the Town of Pembroke from the Commonwealth, so, and they do their applications and make sure that the veterans get what the veterans deserve. So, any questions on Veteran Services? Moving on. Herring Fisheries, this is one where we had increased it last year and from 2021 per the request of the superintendent. I just can't keep it at that number. We need to find every dime we could. I'm confident that $1,600 will get them the supplies that they, they need. If you look at the actual from 2023, it was slightly less than that and we're, we're just going to have to make do and, and if I have to, I'll, I'll find them something. I'll donate out of my own pocket, but I think they'll be fine with the $1,600. Any questions on Herring Fisheries? Okay. That is it for tonight. So you have seen all of the general fund budgets at this point. On the 24th, we will complete the warrant articles for the budget and you will be, unfortunately, Dan Sullivan wasn't here, so I didn't do Water Enterprise this evening. He's on vacation. He will be here on the 24th and we will cover Water Enterprise. It's not a heavy lift, so you will see the enterprise funds on the 24th, but all of the general fund, you have seen every line item of the town budget.
Very good. Any remaining questions of the board? I don't see anyone in the audience looking to speak. All right, Bill, thank you very much. Do you have anything else under the Town Manager's report?
Just, just a couple of quick things, Mr. Chair. I wanted to note that Monday is Patriot's Day. Town offices will be closed and then I wanted to flag two other things for us. The hazardous waste days are April 20th in Plymouth, May 4th in Hanover, and Pembroke participates in the Duxbury one, but you can go to, in Duxbury on June 8th. You can go to any of those communities. Just go on our website, click on the link, fill out the form, and you can take your hazardous waste to any of those communities. We participate with the South Shore Collaborative as an intermunicipal group that we participate in. Wonderful resource, so check out what you can get rid of. Don't keep hazardous waste in a house that you're not using or you don't have to. If it's a cleaning solution and you're using it, great, but if it's turpentine or something along those lines, old gasoline, get rid of it. This is a perfect opportunity to get rid of it. Pembroke doesn't charge you extra. It's part of your trash fee, so take advantage of that. Those again are April 20th in Plymouth, May 4th in Hanover, and June 8th in Duxbury. Final thing is our audit for our recycling is ongoing. I actually have staff going there tomorrow to take a look at that for me and make sure that, put some eyes on it. If nothing else, keep, keep the company honest. I am not going this year. I have participated in past years, but I've, I've asked others to do that for me tomorrow. But as residents, you can keep our recycling costs down by keeping our contamination down that you put in your recycling bin. Only put those items that are recyclable in your recycling bins. As a community, it's on our website. Take a look at what's allowed and what's not allowed. Throw the other stuff in the trash. Take your hazardous waste to hazardous waste day, but keep your recycles in the recycling bin. So that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
All right. Are there any other questions for Town Manager?
Just for the public's interest, trash recycling this week because Patriots Day fits the idea I think Massachusetts does, we closed down. Are we being delayed?
Yes.
So trash pickup has been delayed?
Well, not this week. Next, next. And then there are a number of delays of trash as a result of construction progress. They're ongoing. Stay tuned on our website. We post that stuff on a regular basis so that we know exactly what's going on out there. I know if you live off of Oldham or High Street starting tomorrow or Route 36 Center Street or West Elm, I know, I know you're paying the price with some of the services and I apologize. What I promise you is it'll be done soon. The roads will improve. The safety indicators, gas leaks on High Street will improve. Just bear with us.
All right, thanks. If there's nothing else under the Town Manager's report, move on. Are there any liaison updates this evening? Hearing none, move on to old business. We have an item of old business and I'm surprised that the draft letter is not in this pack to discuss, Bill.
I'm sorry.
But, but everyone, it's been distributed to everyone and it's a discussion, a possible vote for a letter to the House Speaker regarding the postponement of Rep. Rep's vacancy in the election to November. That wasn't worded very well. That's agenda. I've read it verbatim. So everyone has received a copy of the draft. Are there any comments on it or discussion about it?
I thought it was a very clean, straightforward letter. It was very matter of fact. There's nothing controversial about it, I thought. So I, I support the letter.
I would vote to approve it as well. I think that they should, they should hear from us.
I was fine with it.
Yeah, same here. All right, very good. So it, it's in draft form now. We can vote that, the board approves the, the draft letter to be signed by this board and, and presented to the Speaker of the House and, and other, in the state delegation.
So moved. Second.
Most made second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All's in favor? So we'll print that out and have it available for our signatures next meeting, Bill?
Yeah, if you come by the office, next meeting is fine.
Yeah, we'll do next meeting. Give a chance everyone to sign it and send it off. As I alluded to in the previous meeting, it's, time is not of the essence because it's not going to change anything. All right, thank you very much. Is there any other old business? Is there any new business? Are there any announcements this evening?
I have a few.
Okay.
Just a reminder that the Community Cleanup Day will be April 20th. We'll set the dumpster.
We just have to, wherever you want.
But we just, we did decide that we're going to the herring run.
I'm sure it's already.
So we're going to meet at the herring run on the morning of the 20th. That's going to be where we meet with the dumpster for the day. Well, they'll keep it till Monday anyway, right?
Yep.
Fine morning.
April 20th, 8:00 AM-ish. You don't have to be there at that minute, but it would be nice if everybody got together at the beginning. There is information on Facebook. There'll be emails that go, wow, we're going to, I'll have Sabrina post it to the website as well and on the town Facebook page. Fish Fry is May 5th. That will be 11 to 3, also at the herring run, of course. The library had a couple of events they wanted to share. One is they're having an ASL hour from 9:00 to 11:00 on April 16th, which I can, I think must be during April vacation. And then they're doing their babysitting course again on April 17th for ages 11 to 14. Both things you have to register for, so you have to call the library to do so. And I just had a quick question about the West Elm. People come down that street for the West Elm detours, but you don't know the detour is there until you're well past where you want to be. Is there anything we can do to have them put signs? Because the same thing happened in the fall. And so you get all the way down there and then you're going to get detoured all the way to Hanson.
I concur 100% having driven that yesterday.
Oh, it's horrific. Well, it's just so late in the game when they should put up those signs. Otherwise, they'd go different ways. I guess that's it. I think that's it.
All right, forget that. Are there any other announcements? Is there any community comment from the board? Is there any community comment from the public? Yes.
President Townley, Taylor Street. I've got a couple of things. The one I was going to talk about that, I just want to pick you up on, Bill. In the warrant, did you mention the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yeah, we didn't cover that this evening. That's on for the 24th.
It is, okay. Because that's the missing number.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it wasn't on tonight.
They came in last.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember we had the, there was the earlier question about the numbering. Right, right. That's, that's the missing number. It came to us last.
Okay. So that's on for the 24th.
Okay, okay, good.
Glad you answered that, though.
Yes. The other thing is I wanted to make an announcement to the public and to the residents that we're doing, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting a debate, well, it's a forum for the candidates. So Select Board and School Committee. It'll be May 9th from 6:00 until late. What we're doing is we're, we're looking for questions. So the questions we'll be asking the candidates, a few here tonight. The questions we want from the town, so we're not going to make these up. We want the town to, we've already had some already. But we're, we've got a, an email address, pembrokedebate24@gmail.com. So any questions that you have for, for the Chamber of Commerce to ask the candidates, please send them there by May the 2nd and then we'll, we'll have a committee that'll go through them.
Is it just school committee and select board?
Yes. We don't have time for all the different post candidates.
Who's on the committee to decide which questions will be allowed and which ones will not?
So we have Emmy Flaherty from the Chamber of Commerce, Peter Brown, Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, and one other, Mike, I think his name is Keeble.
Oh, Kelby.
Kelby, Kelby, sorry. Yeah. So they're the three that we've nominated as a good cross-section residents and they'll be screening, going through the, the questions. We actually believe we'll probably have, the big job they'll be doing is screening through what the actual topics are. We're going to have hundreds of different questions, but they're all, they'll come down to five or six key questions, so.
So you guys are only going to ask five or six key questions? So it's only going to come down to five or six questions? You're going to narrow it down that much?
Correct. And each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer. So they'll get two minutes, opening statement, five questions, and then one minute closing statement. We've got six candidates for school and three candidates for, so there's a, there's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of questions to be asked and there's a lot of answers to be heard. We'll have a timer, so we've, we've got everything set up, so it'll be, you know, as well organized as we can make it.
And will be a debate format or will it be someone stands and talks and?
We'll have a moderator.
So a debate format?
No.
Not a debate format?
No. The candidates will be asked the questions. The, the answers will be from the candidates. There'll be no back and forth between them.
Who's the moderator this year?
That's a really good question. It would be me this year. Thank you for asking. Okay, thank you.
I'm looking forward to it. I'll see you there.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah, you didn't mention the building.
Did I say the library? Did I say the library? I think I said library. But it's library, May 9th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Okay?
Thank you, Fraser.
Thank you.
Is there any other community comment from the audience? Hello?
Hi. I just wanted to let everyone know there's a craft event at the Pembroke Historical Society this Saturday from 12:00 to 4:00, and the proceeds will go to Sasha, the Pembroke Police Department Comfort Dogs.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't see anyone else, so I'll run through upcoming issues. April 24th, we have final article recommendations. Again, on the 24th, all final warrants are signed. 24th, once again, both the OCES representative, 24th, mobile food vendor caterer application, My Coffee Smith's. On April 30th, all warrants posted on May 8th, door to door. I'll correct that typo there. Door-to-door solicitation, permit renewal, power home remodeling. May 14th, the annual town meeting, and May 18th, the annual town election. If there's no other business, it's our most adjourned. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.